I'll stand for a moment of silence as a salute to the flag, please.
.............................................
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October 12th School Board meeting in North Hill School District. We are now going to turn the floor over to Mr. Sean Clune who has a nice surprise for us for student performance.
Good having us this evening. This is the Dream Tenders Ensemble. They are relatively new. This is the second year that we've had the group. They are mostly up in the choir, but open to any choir member that would like to audition. Maybe one day a week after school for an hour. We've been doing it for about a month. And so this is our first official performance. We're going to sing three things for you. The national anthem, of course. And then the second one, a podium off now, which is the national anthem.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous sight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
So next we are going to sing for you, it's an old hymn tune called "Will the Circle Be Unbroken", but this particular arrangement takes harmonies from the bluegrass tradition and the gospel tradition, and uses them together into a song. So we hope you enjoy "Will the Circle Be Unbroken".
Will the circle be unbroken? By and by, Lord, by and by. There's a better home awaiting if we try, Lord, if we try. Will the circle be unbroken? By and by, Lord, by and by. There's a better home awaiting if we try, Lord, if we try. I was singing with my sisters.
I was singing with my friends.
And we all danced together. 'Cause the circle never ends. Will the circle be unbroken? By and by, Lord, by and by. There's a better home awaiting if we try, Lord, if we try. I was born in a valley where the sun used to shine. But I'm part of the light. On a day of a mountain. Will the circle be unbroken? By and by, Lord, by and by. There's a better home awaiting in the sky, Lord, in the sky. Will the circle be unbroken? By and by, Lord, by and by. There's a better home awaiting in the sky, Lord, in the sky. Will the circle be unbroken? By and by, Lord, by and by. There's a better home awaiting in the sky, Lord, in the sky. In the sky, Lord, in the sky.
But before we end with the national media on the monitor, we have to sing this for the choir. We want to invite you to our first high school performance, which is next Wednesday in the middle school auditorium. It is our collage concert. We are featuring all three of our big choirs, the North Hill Singers, the Sympona Choir, the Women's Choir, along with the Changer Strings, Wind Ensemble, Wind Symphony, and special guest, the Allegheny Brass Band. And each of the groups is doing in collaboration with one of the other groups. So Women's Choir is performing with the Changer Strings, Sympona Choir is performing with the Wind Symphony, and the combined choirs are performing with the Wind Ensemble. It is seven o'clock in the middle school auditorium. Free and open to the public. Now here's our North Hills on the monitor.
We're united, sons and daughters, Bound in love and grace for Thee. North Hills, Thy are all a matter; Ever faithful we'll be. All a matter we shall treasure, Memories that never die. Though Thy years go swiftly by, Will be true to North Hills' heart.
We have plenty, so if you'd like to do that, absolutely.
We can move now to, I guess, public recognition. Do we have anything? Oh, Mary Grimm? Mary here? Thank you, Mary. Our principal, Ross Elementary Principal, will introduce the Ross Elementary Student Council Officers. You can take the microphone. That'd be great. Not the podium, I'm sorry. You could pull it down there. There you go.
This is not meant for short people. Okay. So at Ross Elementary, we have a student council. And what we do every year is we elect officers for our student council. And then these folks become kind of the ambassadors for all of the different programs that we collect for throughout the course of the year. So our sponsor is Mr. Buzz Gabus, who is at basketball practice right now. But he kind of rallies these troops together, along with homeroom representatives, and really takes on different initiatives for Ross to give back to the community. So last year, we set a record for fundraising for the building. We were over $17,000 in charitable donations. So these guys here kind of took to the challenge of stepping up this year. These are our sixth graders, and our sixth graders are always our officers. And to be standing up here in front of you, they have to run for office, so they have to make campaign posters, and then they also have to give a campaign speech. So they have to stand up and deliver to all 640 Ross students. So, you know, they got a real campaign experience and good public speaking experience. So these are the kiddos that were selected by Ross to represent them. And the first thing that we brought to them was the idea of the JDRF fundraiser, because we actually have four students at Ross that have type 1 diabetes. And the idea was brought to us by one of the parents of one of those students who asked, could we do a JDRF walk? So I passed it over, passed it over to Mr. Gabus, and we put it into the hands of these beautiful young ladies and women, or men, sorry. And for the very first fundraiser for this year, for the JDRF, Juvenile Diabetes Research Fund, they put together over $6,500 in donations, so. So we have our president, who is Colter Mathis. Our vice president is Royce Parham. Our secretary is Ella DeMoyes. Our treasurer is Michaela Connors. And then we have four PR directors. Our first one is Lily Sentner. Another PR director, Ellie Knox. Savannah Bodnar. And last, we have Scarlett Bernardi.
Once again, thank you, Mrs. Grimm. We appreciate it, and thank you, students, for your service. We can now move on to public comments on the agenda items only. I believe nobody has signed up to speak to the board on the agenda items. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for September 7th and September 14th, 2017. I would like to make a motion that the board approve the minutes from September 7th, 2017 work session legislative meeting, and the September 14th, 2017 legislative meeting per the attached. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I skipped over board member comments, so we're going to move back up to there. Do we have any board member comments tonight?
Yes, I have one comment. I would like to publicly congratulate and thank Mr. Dorn Camp and Mr. Walsh for the Vietnam Veterans Program they put together last week. I received a lot of favorable comments from veterans who attended. Very appreciative of the school district's recognition of the Vietnam veterans.
Good point. Thank you, Lily. Thank you for that. Any other board member comments?
I guess the only thing I have to say is that, and I just told Colton, is that your first name, honey? Pardon me?
Colter.
Colter. That I read his name in the paper. So not only is he here with the $6,400 that they raised, but also in regards to the superheroes that our school district, no?
That was Westview, but they did a change drive.
No, I know. I know, the superheroes. But it's a whole two-page article, but his name was in the paper.
Yeah, he's at Ross, and so they did a change for change. So they did a dime war. It was similar to Westview, but they didn't have any of the superhero kind of themes.
And I can't remember how much money they, this was all for the hurricane victims. Do you remember how much was raised?
Over $4,000. It's on, Dr. Manarino will bring that up in the presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. But anyway, I think it's just phenomenal. Our students are unbelievable. And I'm so happy to be a part of this district.
Thank you, Arlene. Any other comments?
I just have one thing that I'd like to raise. We might be aware that Pittsburgh's in the running, at least we hope. Applications are due next week for the second headquarters for Amazon. So there's a lot of buzz around the city about that, including where I work at Pitt, where we're providing some information to the committee that's trying to attract them here. And just recently, I think it was yesterday, there was a conference where one of their high, I can't remember his title, but he's one of the highest ranking officials at Amazon, and he just happens to be a Pittsburgh native. So hopefully that gives us maybe a little bit of a leg up. But at this conference, I think it was called the Geek Wire Conference, so you can look it up. But I read a story about it today, and he was quoted as talking about the characteristics that Amazon is looking for in any city that it relocates to. And I should have printed it out and brought it with me tonight, but I was too busy today. But essentially what he said was, he's looking for, they're looking for places where they put high emphasis on STEM education and particularly computer science education in our schools. So along those lines, I think that just supports further what Dr. Taylor and Dr. Van Ad are pursuing to reinvigorate our curriculum in computer science. And not only was that event happening, but just today, the CEO of Google was in Pittsburgh today talking about much of the same topic, about the workforce of the future and what's going to be required. And they're actually starting a billion-dollar initiative that they announced here in Pittsburgh today, because, again, everything eventually comes through Pittsburgh. It just so happens that the current CEO of Google, he's from India, but the first time he came to the United States, it was to visit his aunt and uncle who lived in, yes, Pittsburgh. So hopefully, all these signs mean something. And, but again, I think that just goes to reinforce what we're doing in our curriculum in seeking to modernize it and prepare our kids for the jobs that they're going to be, where that kind of knowledge is going to be needed in the future, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we could now move on to student representative reports. And Grace, I guess you're kind of flying solo tonight, so it's all yours.
So it looks like you're going to get a pretty one-sided report, but I have the athletics summary for the past month. North Hills Athletics has had a pretty strong start this year. The football, soccer, girls tennis, cross-country, both girls and boys, golf and volleyball teams have all had some good success. To begin, the boys' golf team has had two successful matches this year, which, I don't know if you follow our golf team, but that is a nice step up from past years. Also, we are sending Junior Jacob Stuckert to continue on to compete at the AAA Whipple Championships. And the girls' cross-country team was victorious over Shayler Nock Butler, and they're going to be sending runners to the Whipple Championships as well. The boys' team will be sending seven runners. The varsity boys' cross-country team defeated Shayler as well. In addition to the varsity team, I want to give a special shout-out to the middle school team, who has almost had an undefeated season, which is incredible. I'm excited for them to come join the high school. Both boys' and girls' soccer have had a tough season this year, but with six games remaining for the guys and three for the girls, we look forward to the rest of the season. Girls' volleyball beat Shayler Area and Franklin Regional. The girls' tennis team wrapped up their season already, but they ended with a win against Trinity, and they sent two girls to Whipple Section Singles, which they both won in the first round, and two pairs to Section Doubles to compete for the Whipple title. And finally, North Hills football has had a season record of three to four with three games remaining. With only a few more weeks before the beginning of the winter sports season, we have a lot to look forward to in swimming and diving, wrestling, and basketball.
Great. Great report, Grace. Thank you. Thank you very much. We could now move on to solicitors' report. Mr. Witheralls, or anything for the meeting?
Not for the public.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Manarino.
Okay, I have our points of pride, tradition, and excellence for the month of September, as soon as we get it on the board.
It is.
And a keyboard that doesn't work?
Is the touchscreen up there, Amanda? Just seeing if she's paying attention, John.
Nothing's working tonight? There we go.
All right, here we go. As Mr. Nudie mentioned, we hosted the Vietnam War with WQED, where WQED chose North Hills as their site for a special screening of the Vietnam War by Ken Burns. And we had a panel discussion with Vietnam veterans. I'd like to thank Mr. Nudie for his efforts that night. Mr. Nudie was a panelist, and he shared his personal experiences from his time in Vietnam. So, Mr. Nudie, thank you for your service, as well as for your sharing of your insights and your experiences that evening. It was very moving. We had a mystery Skype event at our seventh grade. Our seventh graders in Zach Skringer's classes played rounds of mystery Skype with students from around the nation through the Microsoft educator community. And it was set up by our librarian, Megan Clark. And students assumed various roles, such as the questionnaire, the charter answer, and silencer. And they worked together to determine the geographical location in the United States of another class of students by asking yes and no questions using Skype and utilizing their knowledge of geographical concepts. We had Johnny Appleseed Days. And we had students in various North Hills elementary schools take part in the fall festivals and Johnny Appleseed Days as they combined learning with apple-themed activities. Next, Vanna. All right. Four North Hills seniors were named 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program semifinalists. There are only 16,000 students who are selected for this nationwide honor, and our semifinalists represent less than 1% of United States high school seniors. Our AP Scholars, the college board named 87 North Hills students as AP Scholars following their outstanding performances on the college-level AP exams. And this number marks a 34% increase in the number of AP Scholars at North Hills over the 15-16 school year. We celebrated Constitution Day. And our grade-three students at McIntyre Elementary learned about the important American document and were challenged to assemble puzzles that spelled out the Constitution's preamble. The high school's new security officer and retired Pennsylvania State Police Trooper Dean Lawrence was a first responder on September 11th, 2001, to the Flight 93 crash site. He shared with our high school students his firsthand experiences of overseeing more than 20 state troopers of 800-plus who responded as they secured the perimeter around the incident in the rural Somerset County. Ninth-grade biology students in Jackie Karenbauer's course took part in an escape room challenge that tested their knowledge of the structure and function of the parts of a cell. Students worked to solve clues about the cell parts and use problem-solving logic to figure out combinations in order to open the boxes. Our Principles of Biomedical Science course, which is new this year, produced, what's happening here is we have a mysterious death of Anna Garcia. And while investigating Anna's death, students will play the role of various professionals within her related biomedical science fields. They will examine autopsy reports, investigate her medical history, and explore medical treatments that might have prolonged her life. This course is taught by Jen D. Pasqual and was created by Project Lead the Way. Excellence in Arts. The North Hills Marching Band Festival was held, and we had our 50, this was our 57th year that was held in September for us, and we had a total of eight bands participate in the event this year. In Athletics, senior swimmer Sidney Davidson earned an All-American recognition in the 100 Breaststroke from the National Interscholastic Coaches Association. Her time of 1 minute, 3.35 seconds set a new North Hills record and placed among the top 100 times recorded in the nation last season. So we had Help for Harvey Coin War. Our middle school students raised $2,964 to support those affected by Hurricane Harvey by conducting a building-wide hat day in Help for Harvey Coin War. All donations will be used to purchase needed supplies for Paul Revere Middle School in the Houston Independent School District. Students at High Cliff Elementary, McIntyre Elementary, and Ross Elementary participated in walking and running fundraisers to support their building's parent-teacher organizations. Our licensed practitioner nurse, Frances Haley, has two original art pieces in the Arts of Facts: Uncovering Pittsburgh Stories, exhibited at the Heinz History Center with the Pittsburgh Society of Illustrators. Ross Elementary students and staff raised $6,643 to fight juvenile diabetes. And Ross Student Council, who we recognize tonight, spearheaded the two-mile walk in partnership with the Juvenile Diabetes Research Fund. Westview PTA organized a Change for Change campaign to benefit hurricane victims. Each day featured a theme, with the final day being Hurricane Heroes. Be a hero, dress like a superhero. And the students and staff shattered the building goal of $1,200 by raising $2,345 this year. Please join Hands for Service Club and Student Council members in the high school's second annual Jake Wodorski's Monster-5K and Spooky Stroll on October 28th at North Park Boathouse. All proceeds will benefit the local chapter of Make-A-Wish and the Children's Hospital Foundation. Again this year, please join the Northland Library for this year's first session of Digital Boot Camp for Parents on October 21st at 9:00 a.m. at the CCAC North Campus. The sessions, this session is entitled "Social Media 101: What Parents Need to Know", and those are the items of pride, tradition, excellence for the month of September. It has been a great start to the school year. We've had great things happening in our schools and around our schools for our students and to our teachers. And I can't believe it's already the middle of October. We've done a lot of really, really good things happening in the schools.
I just have one.
I want to clarify, that fundraiser goes until tomorrow. That's why we don't know how much money Ross raised in theirs.
I was like, why is it not in there? That's why.
Here's the other thing. I don't know, I read this article. It's really great. And what it says is, here it just said that the principal was going to be in the Halloween parade, and the kids were to pick out what his costume was. And they came up with three ideas, and they picked out for him to be a Disney princess. So I would recommend we all go to Westview Parade to watch Mr. Simpson as Cinderella or one of those princesses. It's a great little article. You know, it's in that, what's it called, the, that we get in the mail every week? McKnight Journal. That's what it's, and that's where his name is. I'm telling you, your name's in there. I'm sorry, I just thought I'd.
That's great. No, thank you. Thank you for that.
Because she didn't have it in your report.
It wasn't there. He didn't read it.
Pardon me?
I didn't want to embarrass Mr. Simpson.
It's a secret as to who he's going to be.
I can't wait to see him in that Disney princess.
Technically.
How could it be a secret what's in the paper?
That's true.
Hey, let's talk about McIntyre.
Now, we'll turn to Mr. John Thomas of Thomas and Williamson. Will help provide us a construction update on the McIntyre Elementary School Edition project. All yours, Mr. Thomas.
I did want to announce that Pat missed another point of pride, and it was that Ross Elementary and its football field was featured on the CBS Sports presentation of the Steeler game on Sunday.
Okay, coming down the home stretch here, there's just a couple of things that are left to do. So as we started into this last month, we had, there was actually a fair amount of finishes that had to be done. The exterior metal, I think you saw that going on for a while, and there was a paper film on top of it that they had to tear off. Finishing up the stormwater system, which was that very late change where that we brought in that put a big dent in the project contingency. in that put a big dent in the, in the project contingency. We had the electrical devices, which you typically do at the end, and the HVAC equipment. And we actually had planned on starting into the closeout process, and we are there. So, we did everything except, I think we're still missing some carpet, and if you were, if you've been by it recently, you can see they started putting down the mulch for the playground. Playground equipment is set, and there's some landscaping gravels that are going to go around the building. So, we're looking at completing the final cleaning. I'll show you some pictures tonight, it looks nice and clean inside. Finished that mulch and landscaping, I saw some bushes went in this morning, and then continue on the closeout. And this shows how we ended up, and you could see that we went about three weeks beyond where our target was, and I think most of that was with the exterior work. And this shows the, how, the details of how the schedule lined up. This, I thought this was, this was kind of interesting. I show you this every month with the labor expended, and I was just shocked at how little labor was spent to get that, that addition done. It was really, really quite efficient. This is your cash flow versus the target baseline, everything's fine there. This is the breakdown of the, of the hard budget. You can see we've, we overspent the hard construction by 20,000 to 28,000. However, as I explained to you last time, I thought we were going to be able to do some reconciliation of the soft costs and still come out okay, and we did. We still have 76,000 down at the very bottom in salvaged contingency when we looked at the excess funds we had available in the soft costs. So, all things considered, we took a big hit with the site work that we had to do with the stormwater, but still came out okay. I do have a change order for you tonight. This is, this is a remnant of the code inspectors when they did their review of the, of the plans, they had come up with a couple items, this is one we hadn't worked in yet, and it was to change from a very simple vent in the exterior wall for the kitchen hood, to take that outside and replace that with a bird screen and a back draft damper, relatively small change order, $543.90. Any questions on that one? And then let's go through the photos. I got to tell you, I'm really, really pleased with the work Mark Scheller and Eccles did. They did a phenomenal job of, of taking the original aesthetic of the building and adapting their design to meet the very quick aggressive construction schedule that we have had. So, here's the inside. The only difference between this and the original building is we put the overhead cabinets above the lockers in the corridor. That was a, that was a request that came in, in design, that they thought it would be better to have those. Classrooms look almost identical to what we have in the 19, or the 2008 job. Floor is all cleaned up, this is the stairway that's now on the end of the building, we had a stairway on the end of the building before, we built a new one on the new end. View from inside. This is the playground mulch going in, they still have quite a bit more mulch to put in. This is the new exterior that we, we did with the, the metal panels. Better view of it over here. And I think when you look at it from further away, it actually does blend in quite well. He did a, he did a really remarkable job. Let's go back to that one more. Along this edge here, this is where all that gravel is going to be placed. That'll keep equipment away from the siding and keep it cleaner. Any questions?
Great, thank you, John.
Okay, thanks, folks.
Good job, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I guess we can now move on to education. I'm going to ask Mrs. Bender to take the education agenda.
Yes, on our agenda this evening is the submission of the North Hills School District Comprehensive Plan from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021, the 2018-19 Academic Calendar, and the GLADE Run, which is the school-based mental health services. The superintendent, excuse me, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the Board approve Education Items 1 through 3.
Second?
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Bender.
I have a question, I have a question, I guess for Dr. Taylor on the, I know there's a lot been going back and forth with the PSSAs, and I know when we get our results, there's like maybe six sections underneath, you know, that is given as part of their score. And I know, like on math, the one is geometry, and I was looking at the program for International Student Assessment. They actually rated us, their assessment in the United States was that we're low in geometry. I wondered, did we ever go into those details to assess where we're weak, where we're strong?
We do, there's specific reporting categories in both ELA and in math, and we do actually go all the way down into those reporting categories by grade level and by class, all the way down to the student level.
Is that easy to do? Do they provide that, or is this like a lot of?
They give you some information, but it's a lot of work in spreadsheets.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question on the PSSAs, and I know you're going to be giving us some more detailed analysis in November of our performance. But is it, is it true that we, we don't get to see the actual questions?
That is true.
So, does that make it more difficult for us to analyze our student performance when we don't know precisely where they're, we know the general content that they're getting, but not the specific questions and how they're, where they're missing them and?
Correct. We do not receive an item analysis, and we're not permitted by law to actually view the questions while the students are taking the test. So, it makes it more challenging when we don't have an item analysis.
And just for, while we're on the subject of tests, not at this meeting, but at an upcoming meeting, I think we should, we should have a further discussion of where we stand on, on the keystones, because that's, and having a conversation with Dr. Taylor recently, you know, there's a question of whether, at least in my mind, of whether we should be supporting perhaps an elimination of that, of that exam at the state level. It's been suspended for, for the past two years as a graduation requirement, but I have serious questions as to whether it's, it's something that the state should be administering at all with all the other exams that our students take between AP, CHS, the SAT, the ACT certifications for technical certifications that they receive for what is spent on that test. I seriously doubt we're, we're getting much value back, and I think Dr. Taylor shares a lot of those, those same feelings.
I think in order to take that stand, the simple solution to that is, let's do a resolution and send it to our local representatives. That's, that has to happen in the legislature, so.
You can do that. We can draft something very easily.
Okay, well, is there a general agreement then that that's something we should have and spend time to do?
We could discuss that next meeting, maybe the Board.
I'll put something together for you.
I'm sorry, but I can't hear Don here, what you're drafting.
No, we're just talking, we'll have that discussion the next meeting before it's drafted or before we pass it.
Oh, okay.
Well, I thought that the latest, they were going to leave it up to the school districts to make it part of their requirement or not, and, I mean, I certainly think we don't need it. I think we can do well enough without the Keystone Exam, but.
It's still part of Pennsylvania Department of Education to have it as a graduation requirement. It's been suspended twice now.
Right.
And it'll probably go again, be suspended again. So, I think the solution is just, just make our, our feelings known to our local representatives, and they can go back to Harrisburg with it, maybe completely eliminate the Keystone again, exam.
Is this something that comes up in your conversations with other superintendents?
Always.
And is the feeling similar?
Particularly when we don't have a budget and the state is paying $4 million to administer the test? It's low-hanging fruit.
Okay, any other questions or thoughts on education? Thank you. Mr. Muha, I guess you still have the floor, we're going to move on to Athletics and Activities.
Yes, we have one item on the Athletics and Activities agenda that the Board approved, the North Hills Gay-Straight Alliance Club as a student-initiated club. I don't know if there's any questions on that.
I, I just have one, I just, so I understand how we do these things. On these clubs, I'm under the impression that these things, at least the submission has to be done previous April, or the April, correct me if I'm wrong, or sometime in the previous year for this school year, is that, and this request, as I read, is for this school year, not next school year, this school year.
Right.
Okay. And normally speaking, this request or these kind of requests would be done previously, and when, when is that, anytime?
By April.
By April 1st of the previous year.
Yeah.
Okay. I know that's our, our procedure, all right, thought it was, so all I'm saying is, I think, I don't think the Board really would want to change the procedure, but for this particular request, that we would suspend the procedure for this request and vote on it tonight as opposed to just saying, look, this has to be submitted or resubmitted this April for next year.
Right.
I just want to make that clear, that's, that it's probably not procedurally correct to be approving this tonight, but I'm going to suggest we, we suspend that procedure to vote on this tonight. So, are you going to make a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Okay. You made a motion.
The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the Board approve Athletics and Activities, Item 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's it, that's it for you, I guess.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We could, doesn't appear we have anything under Beatty for Mrs. Bender or Mr. Nudie unless you have something you want to add?
No, other than the fact that today was Beatty's open house.
Oh, okay.
It's, will be over in eight minutes.
Okay, let's hurry up so we can get down.
I don't think I can make it, but it's always very well done.
I'm sure, I'm sure. They always sort of agree, yes.
As we have to resubmit our comprehensive plan, Beatty also falls under the same restrictions. They are updating it to include new curriculum, but it'll be prepared for the next meeting.
And we don't meet in October, we meet in November.
Great. Okay, thank you. We can now move on to Personnel, that'd be Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Wogus. There were seven items under Personnel which were discussed in executive session, and therefore I would move that Items 1 through 7 under Personnel will be added to the legislative meeting agenda for approval.
Second?
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, now, this is our voting meeting. So, you just voted to add it to the voting meeting? So, can we get approval of the Personnel items? It's just not worded correctly.
Okay, sorry.
I caught you.
Well, we do our motion. Sorry, Tom.
The superintendent recommends an ISO move that we approve Items 1 through 7 under Personnel.
Second.
All right. Assuming no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We can now move on to Community and Intergovernmental Relations, that'd be Mr. Yeomans.
Sure, we just have one item, and this was tabled from last, last month's meeting, and it was the item that I had brought up regarding the reimbursement of internet expenses for school board members. Just briefly, for those who, who aren't familiar with this topic, four years ago, when I was first elected, it was, became, it was told to me that board members get reimbursed for their home internet expense, and that really didn't make any sense to me, because I had internet before I joined the Board, I'll have internet after I leave the Board. Why do the North Hills taxpayers need to be paying for my internet service? It was explained to me that many years ago, many moons ago, when the internet was new and you still had that sound when you did your dial-up, that not all board members had internet access to be able to view their agendas online. So, I said, well, that's reasonable, but obviously, times change, and now internet is pretty much a home utility that everybody has. And also, in that interim time, we, as a district, have put iPads in the hands of all our kids in sixth grade through ninth grade, and told them what a powerful educational 24/7 tool this is for them to have. Unfortunately, through our surveying in the district, we learned that about 3% of our kids don't have internet at home for various reasons of affordability. So, it dawned on me that, you know, when I did the math with 3%, the number of kids we have, six through nine, that about 50 of our students aren't getting the same benefit from their iPad that their classmates are getting, because they can't get internet at home, and then it really dawned on me that this is definitely something that we should not be doing. Having that single mother who may be working at Sam's Club or Target, who pays her wage tax, who, if she owns her home, pays her property tax, or if she doesn't, if she rents, she still pays her property tax through her rent. If I were that parent, I'd be really mad that I can't afford internet service for my, for my child, yet the school board is reimbursing its members for home internet service. So, with all that said, I just think it's, it's ethical and good practice that we discontinue the practice of reimbursing board members for home internet service under the guise that it is, it is a service that we would have regardless of our service on the Board, and it should not be the taxpayer's responsibility. So, I will make that motion.
I'd like to second that motion.
I'd like to make a few comments here or questions to Mr. Yeomans. Do I do it now?
Yep, this is the time. This is the time, yep.
Mr. Yeomans, you keep referring to the fact that students here do not have internet service. Now, according to my facts, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Taylor, I believe there's more, it's closer to 132 students, not 50, that does not have internet service here, you know, at their home. So, therefore, how many get reimbursed for this? Five, maybe six? It's not going to touch it. How do you plan on coming up with the other monies to provide this internet service to those students? What big thing are you going to take away? You could take away meals?
I might be asked a question.
Oh, yeah, I'm asking you. How do you plan on coming up with the additional monies to pay for the students' internet service?
I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting that the, the district pay for the?
Well, that's what you keep implying here.
Well, no, I'm, what I'm saying, and I think I've been pretty clear, is that while we have students that, that don't have internet at home because they can't afford it, the district should not be allowing taxpayers to pay for our internet service. That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not implying that the district should, should pay for.
Why are you bringing this up at this time? Be honest. I want the truth. Be honest.
Well, I brought it up four years ago, right after an election, and it went down 7 to 2 with only Ms. Knollish supporting it. I'm hoping with an election coming up in a month, that maybe people will change their minds.
Well, I voted the last time, and I will not change my vote now, because it's an election year and I am running. So, therefore, a lot of this is directed at me.
I, I said no names.
Oh, I know, you don't have to, anybody.
Never at any point did I say any names.
I know, but anybody that knows who's running this year would know who you're targeting. And Mrs. Knollish, you made reference to the fact, the last meeting, about us being volunteers. It is not said in the school board director's, you know, their job description that we're a volunteer. We say we're a volunteer because we don't receive a stipend. It doesn't state that anywhere according to, now, have you, how much money, or have you ever received monies from the basket, uh, span association?
Zero.
Huh?
I've never received money from the school district or from any organization that I've been involved in in exchange for services, reimbursement for indirect expenses like this.
Not for phone?
No, it is my belief that when you're a volunteer, that means you give your time and your talent for free to the organization that you are volunteering with.
Right.
And you do not expect that organization to reimburse you for something like your light bill or your phone bill or your internet.
None of us, I believe, and I can speak for all of us, ran for this Board to think, oh, we're going to get reimbursed for internet. That's why I'm running. Some of you people spend thousands of dollars on a campaign. For what reason, I don't know, but because we're, we don't get any. For what reason, I don't know, but because we don't get anything from it. This all makes no sense to me, other than it's an attack on certain individuals, and I believe it's wrong.
I don't see this as an attack. Yes, I'm running for school board, there are seven people...
And you won both sides.
There are seven people running for school board. Any four out of the seven can be re-elected. I am voting the same way, regardless of the election. This is, I feel, I mean, this bothers, this bothers me, honestly, as the finance chair. Every month this bothers me, I disagree with it, because in my belief as to what, we are volunteers, and we should not be accepting it. But, we voted, we had the vote, we lost that vote, so, it's a democracy.
Yeah. Well, how come you accept...
You don't agree with every decision. I don't agree with every, I don't agree with every decision and every budget, I'm sure there's, everybody could go down the line and say there are things in the budget that we disagree with.
Do you feel comfortable accepting the taxpayers' money to feed you once a month, sometimes twice a month?
I don't care.
Maybe three times a month?
I don't care whether we have food at the meeting or not, that's not why I'm here.
But you eat it, and you're not suggesting to take that away.
It's fine with me, do you want, I'll make, would you like me to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion. Take everything off the table.
All right, any other discussion? Let's hold a vote.
Okay, hold the vote.
Lou?
I, I think that there's, we can have some common ground here. I think, I've never, I've never taken the internet fund since I've been on the board, only because I had it, I use it for my business, didn't see any need to get reimbursed, and besides, I think it would have been the tax law if I had accepted money for it. I think it's time for this to come to an end, though, because everybody does have internet service now, you need it to survive in this life. And maybe we come to an accommodation, we change the policy, that there will be no more internet service reimbursed at the end of a members', a school board member's term of office.
There's no policy now that says we should be reimbursed. I think you people are confused what's policy and what isn't.
How are we paying?
Past practice.
Past practice, okay. Then I would suggest that we eliminate the past practice at the end of a board member's term, current term.
Well, the motion on the floor is that...
End it now.
I'm sorry?
The motion now is just end it.
Yeah, that's the motion.
Yeah, to end it now.
So, that's what I'd like to vote on, at this point. Let's just deal with the motion instead of...
I have a couple of questions, a couple of comments to, what, you know, first of all, do we know what other school districts do?
I don't know, but I, to be honest, I don't, we're talking about this school district, and what we think is the right thing to do.
That's my question. You know, and then, 3% don't have internet. Can they not afford it, or are we just assuming that?
I, I'm making an assumption, but I'm sure maybe it's 2.95, and maybe .05, or doing it for other reasons, but I would have to assume it's a matter of affordability for a lot of families.
Dr. Taylor?
I mean, there was just, I was just reading on one of the Facebooks, that a parent doesn't, you know, was complaining about something, and that's why I do not have cable for my, I do not have cable television for my kids. So, I mean, to assume that everybody can't afford it, may be a wrong assumption, and the thing about it, too, it, to me, it's very minor, it's a voluntary expense, you don't have to take it, nobody has to take it. You know, you met in the blog, and to be honest, I didn't like that blog appearing before a meeting, you know, because I didn't see it, I was kind of blindsided by, you know, we, the perks we do get, that we get into events-free, okay, so do all employees of the school district. You know, we get food, you know, what I had, I had hot dog today, and applesauce.
Right, and we're not, we're not saying take those things away.
Well, no, but I'm saying, I'm saying about our perks.
I'm not saying if we go to work and come to a board meeting that we should starve until nine o'clock.
No, I know, but, but the blog was a perk too far. You know, and it mentioned the perks we do get, and I think this is, you know, I think it's overstated, what we do get, you know, the reimbursement, okay, like, when we were invited, you know, three board members were invited to go to Apple Training in Virginia, and I took advantage of that. Well, what, what did I get reimbursed? I took three days of vacation. Did I get reimbursed for that? No.
No.
I didn't get reimbursed for that. And when you look at, we know from, we've had recent discussions about this, that I think our overall board expenditures were called insignificant compared to other schools. I mean, we have inexpensive dinners, and we have data retreats, we have them at the administration building, we don't go to a conference center, or to a motel. I think we keep everything under control, and then, you know, even to bring this up, to me is my, you know, bothers me when, I don't know, two years ago, I brought up, it's our policy that we will allow kids with three failing grades to continue participation in extracurricular activities. You know, you don't get disqualified in two or four, okay, and this is the state minimum, but Shaler, and Bethel Park, and Pine Richland, and West Allegheny do not accept that state minimum. They go beyond that. I mean, this is academics. I mean, what, what good are we doing a student if we're saying, "Okay, you failed three grades, go ahead and continue on what you're doing?"
Good points, Mr. Muha.
And that's, I mean, where was the anger there? There's like anger over this, where was the anger there?
I'm not angry.
Well, we should be. That's what I'm saying, this is academics.
I'm not angry about this.
This is what, the North Hill School District is here for academics.
I think we're conflating issues here. I don't know what you're talking about, Joe, honestly, has to do with a, with a practice that is way, way out of date, and, and if the amount is so small, you're really not going to miss it when it's gone.
Well, I'm saying, you get angry over this, and, but, but where's the anger over academics?
Well, we had a vote on that, it went one way, it didn't go the way you thought, I think we should have a vote on this now.
That's what we're going to do right now. Anybody else have any comments?
Call the question.
We'll take the votes. Okay, we're going to take a vote, now, I guess we'll do a roll call?
Could I say something?
Go ahead.
Just a little.
Just a little.
Okay, first of all, all of us don't take the stipend, or reimbursement. Second of all, the number that you used, Mike, is incorrect. I mean, where you came up with $60 for everybody's internet, I still have no idea. Now, wait a minute.
Even if it's $5.
Pardon me?
Even if it's $5, it's not money we should be taking.
I also think that you should be aware, there's six people who take it on this board. Five of us are on fixed incomes.
This job doesn't come with an income.
Oh, I know.
That is not the point. That is not the point. I just want to add something. You have your opinion, and I have my opinion. I had, when I got on this board, I had to buy a computer. We didn't even own a computer. That was thousands, that was over $1,000, because think how many years ago that was. I spend more money in this school district as a volunteer.
And I'm sure we have PTA members all over the place, we have other people that volunteer in this district that dig into their own pockets, and we don't pay their internet.
Well, see, you are angry about the internet, okay.
Okay, let's do the vote.
Could we have the motion?
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
What do we, what's the aye for?
Voting to discontinue the practice of reimbursing board members.
Oh, oh.
Take a roll call, please, Mr. Wilgus.
All yours. We'll do a roll call.
I will start with Mr. Yeomans.
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Muha?
No.
Dr. Knollish?
Yes.
Mr. Nudie?
No.
Mrs. Reed?
How do I want to vote? No, right?
No.
No.
Mrs. Spade?
No.
Mr. Wilgus?
No.
The motion fails by a vote of two yes and seven no.
Okay.
Okay.
We know we're people...
Put it to rest.
Okay.
Is there anything else under governmental, intergovernmental relations?
Nope.
Okay. We can now move on to finance, and that would be Dr. Knollish.
Okay, so, we're going to move on to finance, and I know not everyone agrees with every single expenditure. I'm sure we could all go around and find something we all disagreed with, but I'm hoping that we won't, and that we'll just go ahead and keep the school district running so that we can educate our kids. So, I've got the general fund bills, the construction fund bills, the capital project fund bills, the budget transfers, the payroll for the month of September, and I'd like to make a motion to approve those finance items one through five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is any discussion on items one through five?
Ms. Rieger, I will just be casting no votes, only on the line items of home internet reimbursement.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I have two other informational items. One is a revenue summary for September 2017, and the second one is a summary of revenue and expenditures for September of 2017.
Did you make, okay, second, is there any...
Those were just, those were just informational items, so, I guess, that's just, is there anybody, I don't think we need to...
No.
Does anybody have any questions on any of our...
Dave, you have any comments out of the ordinary that...
Dave, do you want to add anything?
Now, these are basically end-of-the-year numbers for 2016-17. I think as you'll see, the revenues came in pretty close to even a little bit, under budget. Expenditures are showing a surplus of about $800,000. There's still some invoices that are outstanding that haven't come in yet. The biggest ones will be for special ed, tuition costs that we haven't been invoiced yet, so I expect to be a couple hundred thousand dollars below that by the time it's all settled. So, you'll end up with a surplus in the, around $700,000 range.
Great. Thank you, David. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Knollish. We can move on to support services, that would be Mrs. Spade.
Okay, I have two articles here. One is the purchase of a new tractor for maintenance, which is dearly needed. We're so happy we're getting it. The other is a change order for McIntyre. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve support service items one and two.
Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Before we close the meeting, is there any additional public comments?
Oh.
If you would be kind enough to take the microphone, ma'am.
Do we do, do we have to do a change order?
And state your name and address for the record? I think, I guess, Mike, you have to read the, and before you do, ma'am, I'm sorry, he'll, go, you can take the, we just have to read, state your...
We would like to invite any resident taxpayer employee of the North Hill School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation, inasmuch as it provides the board with an important source of ideas, as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. The board does reserve the right, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for a public discussion of any particular speaker and/or issues, in the interest of preserving an orderly and effective public meeting. Personnel items must be submitted in writing to the board president for consideration five days prior to the board meeting. Some of your concerns can be immediately and quickly addressed following your comments, while others may require more research and discussion, and when appropriate, you're welcome to further your concerns with us following the meeting. Thank you.
If you would be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, and then you can...
Sure. My name is Deanna Lasik Philpott, and I live at 29 Chapel Drive, 152237.
Thank you.
I will tell you that this is my first board meeting, so if this is not appropriate, you can cut me off and tell me when I do talk about this.
I'll just wait, I'll just go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. So, I'm a, I'm a North Hills graduate, and I just moved back into the district a month ago, and, thank you. My boys will go to McIntyre in the fall, next year, they're in preschool right now. Luckily, or perhaps not, depending on your feelings about it, I am the Pennsylvania consultant for a national health and wellness organization. I am a school consultant that helps schools assess and improve the health and wellness throughout the entire district, in terms of looking at recess, and PE, and school lunches, and breakfast programs, and all that stuff, and everything I do is free, since I work for a nonprofit. And so, one of the things that I did when I knew I was buying a house back in North Hills, was kind of peek around a little bit at some of the stuff that I typically look at when I'm about to go consult with a district, and one of the things I would, I'm curious if you all are aware of this, I don't want to be the health and wellness police, but every school district has a policy, a district policy, on students' health and wellness, it's policy 240, and according to the Pennsylvania Department of Ed, it was supposed to be updated by June 30th. I looked online, and ours has not been updated since 2006.
Wow.
And, yeah, so it was supposed to be updated by June 30th, and part of the new rules by the USDA are that districts have put in place district-wide health and wellness committees, and so I reached out to Lindsay, the food service director, just because I know her